Next up is agenda item number six, Lynn Fields, probate office petition for the removal of Joanne McLean, successor executor. Petition to reopen the estate of John T. DiLeonardo and fiduciary commissioner's findings and recommendations upon the petition for will probate in solemn form for the estate of Geraldine Bowyard. How are you doing ma'am?
Good morning. I need to, we need to convene as a board of fiduciary review board. I move that we convene as a fiduciary review board.
Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're fiduciary review board.
Okay, the first item that I had on the agenda can be taken off because that's been fixed.
Good, good. We always like to hear that.
Fixed itself. So, second item, petition to reopen the estate of John T. DiLeonardo, the second, the petition gives the facts as to why they want to reopen that estate, so it's just. Yeah, I've read the documentation, it makes sense, and so I'll move that we reopen the
estate of John DiLeonardo, the second. Second.
Any discussion?
Let me just ask, did you mention that the suits in Berkeley County, the estate has been moved to Berkeley County?
No, no sir. Mm-mm. He's still, I mean, when he passed, he was a resident of Jefferson County, yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
And then, the final item is in the matter of Geraldine Bowyard. You should have the fiduciary commissioner's findings and recommendations upon the petition will for probate in solemn form that was filed previously. We came before you and elected to refer this to a fiduciary commissioner. Our office referred it to David DiGiarnette. He held a hearing, and you should have his findings and recommendations. Also, in that packet, you will have the objections that were filed by Adelaide Crawford on behalf of the petitioner. So, you have Mr. DiGiarnette's recommendations and then the petitioner's objections to the fiduciary commissioner's recommendation. So, at this point, you can either elect to accept Mr. DiGiarnette's recommendations and/or, I mean, I guess you could also elect to review everything further and hold a hearing later.
Procedurally, at this point, I think you could set it up for a hearing of your own, although that's why we had the fiduciary commissioner, where you could accept or reject the commissioner's findings. Essentially, the commissioner based his findings on, let me just back up one second, the will was not found.
Okay.
And so, we had a presumption in the commissioner's review that if the will is not found, that it was intended to be revoked. And the commissioner found no evidence that it would overcome that presumption. And so, the commissioner is recommending to reject this will. And so, that's, that's the essence of it.
Well, that's what I'm a little confused about on page six, item number two. So, somebody brought forth a will, but it says declining to establish the last will as the last will.
It was a copy.
It was a copy.
Okay. Now, all right. A copy of the last will.
Yes.
And while it is, it's almost unheard of that a copy is probated, I don't think it is completely unheard. But, the fact that the original is gone, it brings up a br-. That she intended to destroy it or revoke it.
Right. Okay.
That presumption can be overcome, but it has to be overcome, I believe, by clear and convincing evidence. And the commissioner did not find that evidence existed. So, therefore, the commissioner is recommending that will is being one that was revoked.
Well, I'm, Mr. DiGiarnette has already heard all evidence and reviewed the, the evidence in the case and heard from the lawyers, and so I certainly believe that this commission should, he was asked to do that, so I believe that we should accept. His findings, the commissioner's findings.
And before you, before you decide on that motion, I'm not absolutely positive that the, that the standard is clear and convincing, but there is a rebuttable presumption. There's presumption that the will has been destroyed, it could be over by evidence, but he found no evidence. So, I just wanted to be certain if there's an appeal that we see on that one issue.
Both attorneys are here. Also, if you all had questions or, I mean, they can answer any questions.
My apologies, Commissioner Nolan.
Well, that's okay. I appreciate the information, and I think we have the information before us and the conclusions reached by Mr. DiGiarnette.
If the attorneys want to make any general statement briefly, I'll allow it if they want to. I just, we can go one and then the other. Just, it's up to you gentlemen. Any statement did you want to make? You don't have to, I'm not going to put you on the spot here, I just want to give you the opportunity.
I would only make a statement if Miss Crawford dies, in response to any things she had otherwise, that's been on the record.
Adelaide Crawford, for the petitioner, the only general statement I'd like to make is that I do believe that the record did show that the decedent intended for this to be her last will and testament, even though the original was never found. The petitioner is the individual who took care of her for the past five to eight years when her son was nowhere to be found. And, I mean, I think the record also shows that she was not the most organized individual. In fact, she lost her 2014 original power of attorney, which named petitioner as her agent, and she came back to Mr. Crawford to have another power of attorney done in 2017, which again named petitioner as her agent. So, I just ask that you consider, you know, honoring her, what her intent was.
Do you want to make a response? Yeah. Just please join us in speaking on the microphone.
Thank you. If I could have just a couple minutes to address this and address the objections. My name is Henry Marr and I represent the respondent Barry Bowyard, who's the son. First of all, I think it's important to note the commission's ability to hear this today is on the record that's been presented by the fiduciary commissioner, his report and objections that have been filed. What I'd like to do is address this morning, if I may, just the objections that Ms. Crawford filed with her, with her objections, and, and give you the reasons why you should confirm the commissioner's report and overrule her objections. It is very important to note that the petitioner only cites two grounds of objection and the commissioner's findings, both of which object to commissioner's findings of fact and not the commissioner's conclusions of law. The first objection is the commissioner's findings are not warranted because it is possible that Mrs. Bowyard lost, misplaced, or accidentally threw away her original will. The second objection is simply that it is questionable whether she, meaning Mrs. Bowyard, would have ever possessed the intent necessary to revoke her will. The petitioner does not challenge the critical finding of fact that the will was not discovered following Mrs. Bowyard's death, nor the conclusion of law that once it was determined that the will was not discovered and could not be found when she died, the burden of proof shifted to the petitioner to prove by clear and convincing evidence that the will did exist on the day Mrs. Bowyard died. Thus, we are left with a single question, and the only question before you is whether under the testimony presented to the commissioner, the petitioner was able to prove clearly and convincingly that Mrs. Bowyard had this will when she died. Case of Lynn Ray Starter, 202 West Virginia, at page 55 and 51 Southeast, second, page 772, is a 1998 case in the West Virginia Supreme Court of Appeals, which established and defined clear and convincing evidence, sometimes referred to as clear, cogent, and convincing evidence. It is the highest possible burden and standard of civil proof. It is defined as that measure of degree of proof which will produce in the minds of the triers of fact the firm belief of conviction as to the facts alleged. In applying that standard to the grounds asserted by the petitioner, let's, let's look at those grounds. The first ground, the petitioner asserts, and I quote, "It is very possible that Mrs. Bowyard lost, misplaced, or accidentally threw away her original 2014 will." There are myriad of possibilities as to what might have happened to that will in the four years following Mrs. Bowyard's execution of the will, Mrs. Bowyard's death. And that is precisely why we have this rule in situations such as this. When you can't find the will, it is presumed as a matter of both fact and law to have been destroyed by the deceased prior to her death. We don't deal in possibilities. There must be certainties to overcome that presumption, mere possibilities are not enough. The standard requires clear and convincing proof. Remember, the evidence must establish within the triers of fact, that is, the fiduciary commissioner of the first instance and commissioners in the second instance, that the will existed on the day Mrs. Bowyard died. I would suggest to you that no such evidence was offered, no such evidence exists in the record, and their objection number one should be overruled. Objection number two simply has no place in this proceeding. Repeating that objection, and I quote, "It is questionable whether she," meaning Mrs. Bowyard, "would have ever possessed the intent necessary to revoke her will." Close quote. This case is not about Mrs. Bowyard's intent, and her intentions are really irrelevant to this proceeding. This case is about, one, an uncontroversial fact, and that fact is that the will could not be located when Mrs. Bowyard died, and, two, uncontroversial rule of law. That that rule is when you can't find the will, the law says it is destroyed, period. This is not about Mrs. Bowyard's intent or about what she may or may not have intended at any particular time. This is about whether the petitioner has met his burden of proving clearly, cogently, and convincingly that Mrs. Bowyard had this will on the day she died, and there's absolutely no evidence in the record, nor is there any evidence by witnesses to establish that fact, much less establish it as fact clearly, cogently, and convincingly. In summary, we would just merely ask that you adopt the commissioner's report and findings.
Thank you, sir. All right, so, seeing, seeing how that there is no evidence and the fiduciary commissioner made that determination also, did you want to, you were making a motion for?
Yes, I want to make the motion that we accept the, the decision of the commissioner that was, that was appointed to review the case.
One second. Any discussion?
I just, I assume there's a, the only appeal for this is to the circuit court after this.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you guys?
Thank you.
Is that all? All right, thanks. Okay, so, we're going to jump to number 14, discussion of Board of Health, Sanitarian, and Septic approvals. And Mr. Didden from the Board of Health is here, and I know there's, there's been some information floating around and stuff about this, so I'd like to clear.
We have to come back into session.
Oh, I move, we, come in, I, I move, do it.
I move that we exit as the Board of Fiduciary Review Board and enter back in County Commission session.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're County Commission. Mr. Didden.
Commissioner Compton, I, there may be aspects of this issue that could lead to potential liability issues for the county, and I don't know what Mr. Didden is going to discuss exactly, but. It could be that a portion of this should be in executive session.
So, my understanding is that Commissioner Hudson, just as liaison, brought this up so we could, we could have an initial discussion. My intention today was, I hope, just to, to give you a broader introduction to some documents, an audit in particular, that I'd like you to review, and then I'd hope to get on your agenda for a presentation, and at that point, we would potentially need to go into executive session because there's some findings in the audit that, you know, we, that do have legal, potentially legal implications.
Okay, is the audit a public document?
I believe most likely that it is, and, and I believe that it has already been presented at the Health Department meeting, is that correct?
We can discuss anything that's currently in the audit right now, so, that's fine for discussion today, too.
Okay. It's, it's a thick document, it's probably best if you have a chance to review it before we go into those details. And I'd also like our head sanitarian to be available, he's out of town today, so if I could just take a couple minutes to introduce it, and then I'll give the documents to Jessica for distribution to you, and then we can get on your agenda for, you know, early next month, if that's okay.
Can you give a general gist of the agenda items today, just so the community can understand what's exactly going on?
Exactly. So, the good news, we have four sanitarians at the Health Department now that have passed the state exam. We're very excited, they're off and running. We had been really treading water to keep our heads above water for a while there, getting some help from district sanitarians around the state to get inspections done, and so now we're up and running. We still have two of those sanitarians that need to get additional on-the-job training for food establishment inspections, and three who need some OJT in septic system approval, but they're, they're already out in the field working.
Well, and that's, that's what I've heard complaints about as well in septic, and, you know, people want to get their stuff done before winter and all that good stuff.
Exactly.
They're just not getting that done.
And so, one of the issues I wanted to mention for, and introduce for you to review is some of the complaints that came up at our November board meeting when some installers and developers came in and voiced some concerns, and, and the explanation, the simplest explanation I can provide is that in previous environmental health practices, we really emphasized customer service, rapid response, and de-emphasized documentation. And so, we found that when we had no sanitarians on staff, April 30th of 2018, and we had a lack of documentation from the previous years of, of inspections and permitting, there was a significant gap. And so, when we brought in a top-notch, nationally-recognized sanitarian, Mr. Bob Custard, to head our department and to recruit new sanitarians, we found that some of the installers and developers who had formed habits of operating and, and expected an ease of attainment of their permits were disappointed and frustrated because we did not have a full documentation of the previous permitting process, nor did we have that long-term local knowledge that had been present previously. So, there was a major slowdown, and, and so, you know, understandably, they were, they were concerned and upset. They came, they voiced their concerns in a public comment session last two or three weeks ago at our Board of Health meeting, and I think when you get a chance to review the findings in the audit, you'll understand more about why we had such difficulty making that transition. The good news is, I feel like we have addressed the majority of those concerns directly with either the owner or the developer, and there are a couple outstanding issues that are going to come to the appeal process, which is a hearing with me. We're bringing in an outside soil scientist from Charleston who knows the code and knows the science and is going to give a second opinion, so to speak, and, and we feel confident that's going to be able to resolve those outstanding issues. So, I also have a document written by Mr. Custard that specifically addresses some of the unfortunate misinformation that was presented at our board meeting, for example, about his credentialing, about potential conflict of interest because he's on the Planning and Zoning Commission in Lovettsville, Virginia, and so, he addresses those quite cogently and thoroughly in this document. So, I'll give you a chance to review that as well, in case you receive any direct complaints moving forward, you'll understand where he's coming from and what his bona fides are. So.
Thank you.
Any questions on any of this? Otherwise, we'll plan on getting on your agenda, doing a presentation of the audit within the next couple of weeks, if that's okay.
So, the sanitarian, they're all filled. You're operating at?
We have one, one opening that we're going to be recruiting for, but we have four, so.
We have four now.
We have four now.
We'll have five.
And we would like to have five.
And you got exemption for increasing the salary, which was the main issue from the state.
Exactly. The last time we came before you was to request a letter of support to get that, that starting salary bump, so we don't feel like we're going to have, we're competitive now with Loudon and Frederick and Washington County.
Has that salary bump resulted in more interest in positions then?
Absolutely. From $24,000 to $40,000 is the starting salary.
I wish the state would do that for like teachers and police officers.
Exactly.
And they would all live in Loudon.
Right, right, right.
So, the septic approvals, what was, as far as the document, documentation lapse, what kind of year, are you talking years, months, or?
Years. Yeah, yeah. We had some findings, and I, and I take full responsibility for this. When I joined the department just over five years ago, they had just completed the previous audit of the Environmental Services Division, and there were some findings there that did not get addressed over my tenure, and those came up again in this. And I don't suspect there was any foul play. I see it as a case where we were understaffed, and we had someone who was really devoted to customer service and, and meeting people's needs, and, and there was only so much time in the day, and what happened was there was, you know, not proper documentation of some of those permits. So, you can see where someone who bought a lot four years ago was told that it perked and, you know, was, was a sellable lot, approvable for a standard septic system, comes four years later to the Health Department, hey, I'm ready to sell my lot, and it turns out that we don't have a valid permit on hand, and neither do they. We have to go back to look at the lot. It's rained for three weeks straight, they're standing water, we have a problem permitting that lot. But, we're working through it, you know, these are professionals, there's a standard we can look to at the state code, and Mr. Custard has, has 30 years of experience doing this, so we're, we're working it out. It's a slow process, but I feel like we're on the right track.
Okay, so, like, for a septic approval right now, roughly what is the timeframe? Do you have any idea, or?
Two to three weeks.
Okay. And is that reasonable and normal?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Absolutely.
I think it depends on the builder.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the lot. I mean, sometimes people are trying to, to put systems in to very rocky lots, and, you know, we're going to have to do, I think, some reevaluation of the 20,000 square foot septic reserve that we have adopted locally versus a 10,000 that the rest of the state has, because there was a misperception that that additional 10,000 meant, you know, you could have rock-out croppings within that, you know, 20,000 reserve, and that's not quite the original intent of that change in the, in the ordinance. But, that became the perception that people could get, you know, a septic field reserve approved, even if there was maybe a bit of limestone outcropping there, and that, that turns out to not be the case. So, things like that, we're just going to have to educate developers and builders and installers, and, and Bob is very accessible, willing to go out, meet people, look at the lot, and, and come up with solutions to problems as they arise, so.
Well, and it's just a challenge to get anything to perk right now. We've got more standing water than I've ever seen, than my husband's ever seen in his lifetime.
Yeah, yeah, this is really unheard of.
Didn't we have a record rainfall in Jefferson County? Jim Surkampf posted all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Except for the flood of Harper's Ferry, I think, and was that 36 or 38? Since 1888.
It was a problem.
Yeah, it's a problem. Okay.
This is a question, different topic. Same general topic. I got stopped in front of the courthouse just the other day, and somebody asked me if they could get a record of their old layout of their septic field. Do you all keep those records?
We do, yes, yeah.
And I was correct to send them out that way?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are there any issues as far as the septic systems?
We're, we're concerned as we review some of these systems that we may have a higher number of, of failed older systems that are potentially contaminating wells. I'm hopeful that I'll be able to, within the next six to nine months, give you some hard data on that. So, we're going to, to look into some random sampling of wells in Jefferson County and, and look at potential contamination there, but we're, we have.
It's a good idea.
We have some concerns, particularly with this weather, that, that we may be seeing some, a higher failure rate than, than we previously thought.
Is this, is this localized to general areas in the county, or is this widespread?
I don't, I don't have enough information yet.
Okay.
To be able to, to comment on that.
But, yeah.
But, we're going to get the answer to that. We're actually writing a grant to have a CDC intern come and help us with, with the data collection for that, so.
I mean, that's something that needs to be addressed as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
If there's major issues, I mean, even seeing an estimate for an outside person to come address this and bring it to the county and letting us, seeing the cost, but I mean, if wells are being contaminated or whatnot, and it's widespread, I mean, that's a serious issue.
I'll, I'll make sure we discuss that further when we go over the, the audit, because we'd be happy to with, with additional support. I don't think it would be terribly expensive to do that, so certainly we can.
I think just some aerial photos would be good to document the current situation, and then people then can do their sampling.
I think there may be a variety of viewpoints on this particular issue, based on, you know, some of the folks who have, feel frustrated about trying to move forward with their permitting and that sort of. Of course, the Board of Health has its own, you know, board and own, perhaps some of those things could be addressed in a meeting there, the roundtable there.
Right.
That's where things, that would be, of course, up to the commission, how it wants.
I'd like, I'd like periodic updates of what's going on with this, at minimum monthly, so just so we know exactly what's going on with this issue. I don't know if anybody else?
Yeah, and then, not that you have to come to the commission, but send a written report, or, you know, just.
Right.
Summary of what's, what the status of the issue is.
Is that okay with you?
Absolutely, yeah, we can include that in our monthly environmental health services report, and then just make sure that, that, you know, you're given a synopsis.
I recognize the staffing there has been a struggle for you with dealing with the salary issues and not having, and someone retiring, et cetera, so I know you've been juggling a lot of issues, so.
Well, I think we, I think we really passed the tipping point when we got that starting salary increased from 24 to 40. I think we're going to be able to really move this along in a positive direction, we'll all be happy with for years to come.
I mean, that's a consistent issue in this eastern panhandle. The rest of the state doesn't realize what we are up against with surrounding counties. I mean, we can't offer these low pay scales and expect to get any legitimate people to apply to these positions, so.
Especially with the, when they can drive 30 minutes in any direction and get a much better salary.
Of course.
We're, we're up against the same thing now with nursing. We, we need another full-time LPN, and we had a gangbusters candidate who's, who made $16 an hour right out of school, and the West Virginia Division of Personnel standard starting salary for that position was $10.56 an hour.
Absurd.
It was insulting that we had to go to her and say, you know, so we're, maybe back for another letter of support.
It's a whole nother disaster.
If we're going to live like Leesburg, we have to be able to pay the salaries of Leesburg.
I sent to the Division of Personnel our own county pay scale, saying, you know, you're asking us to pay a sanitarian what we pay an entry.
Administrative assistant with no, yeah, experience.
Right, right, yeah. That's more than my 18-year-old son made doing construction work over the summer.
It costs a living in other counties, I mean.
Right, and I think that that is not. Right, and I think that that is not very well, I mean, it's not very well understood.
Not at all understood, yeah.
I actually saw two state troopers a few days ago shocked, so.
I'm sure they have transfer requests.
Yeah. All right, is there anything else for Mr. Dina?
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll see you soon. All right. All right, we'll move to number seven now. Nick Deal, Jefferson County Development Authority, Resolution of Participation and Cooperation for Local Economic Development Grant Program.
Hey, Nick.
Good morning. How are you all doing?
Just fine.
This is something that I'm sure you all have seen before. It's a, it's an, we do an application every year for the LED grant through the state of West Virginia, and LED stands for local economic development, local economic development. And it's a grant that we can use to do web design, we use it for training, we use it for a number of things to support our agency, and it requires a sign off by the County Commission and, and some matching funds. This year, we're, I think the maximum's $14,000, and it's, it's been 30, and it's gotten lower every year, yeah, for.
You can almost fund maybe most of one position with that.
Right, right. Yeah, they, the state has, has cut back on that over the years, so it's a, it's, it's vital for us to, to continue to utilize those funds.
And the matching funds have already been budgeted, correct, in your budget?
It's correct.
I'll move to approve the attached resolution of, of support for the JCDAs' application for the local economic development grant of $14,400 from the West Virginia Development Office.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Any discussion? All unfair the motion, say aye. Aye, opposed. All right. Okay, so quick thing, because there's two JCDAs' agenda items on here. Nick's here. Does anybody, I think Jane Taff has one, Commissioner Taff has one, and then it's just a general discussion of member resignations. Would we like Nick to be here during some of these discussions?
I think it's important that Nick be here for the discussions.
So, Mr. Lutz, would you mind if we did this and then moved to your agenda item? All right, thank you.
I would also like to point out that Mr. Kennedy is here.
So we'll try to address this as much as we can until 11:45, move to Mr. Kennedy, come back to it, if that's okay with you, and then go to lunch, and then hit the schedule. I think this is what most people are probably here for, the JCDAs stuff, so.
Right.
There's actually three.
Where's the third one?
It's under my report. I received a nomination for the city of Charlestown. I'll talk to you about that as well.
Okay, let's, let's go to that real quick, because there's some misunderstanding at the municipal level of exactly how to nominate people.
So, um, so we received a letter from the city of Charlestown City that they wanted Mr. Tulbert to be on, to replace Darrell Hennessy. However, Darrell Hennessy hasn't resigned yet, and also, the code section requires a nomination of three people. He chooses one of the three, so, and that's for all the municipal appointments, not just the city of Charlestown.
The only municipals on there are the Incorporated.
Yes, that's right.
Ransay, Shepherdstown, Charlestown, Harpers Ferry.
And those are the only entities under.
Oliver, Oliver. Okay, so five.
Oliver, yes.
Okay, so that needs to be communicated to them, because I know in past, the commission has just generally accepted who they want appointed.
That's correct.
I guess, and I'm at fault too, because I didn't realize, I guess I hadn't looked closely enough at the code to realize that we need, they need to provide us with three, the names of three people, and then the commission makes a decision as to which one we will appoint to that authority.
And we send them a letter with the code section, so they, I mean, they should be aware of that, that requirement.
Maybe a fresh letter.
Yes.
And just remind them, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So I will, I mean, I will respond to, specifically to Charlestown's request as well, and let them know that Mr. Hennessy needs to resign, he needs to submit three names to be considered once he does resign.
I heard Shepherdstown was asking too about how, what they needed to do.
Send them a letter that.
I reset it.
Yeah, and we've been, we've been in discussion, and we've received several phone calls from Shepherdstown.
Is there a deadline for the municipalities? That was a question I heard earlier.
So, I mean, obviously you can't make the appointment unless the municipalities give you the names of the people they, they would like to be considered. And if we haven't slated on our agenda to, to appoint on December 6, however, I did receive a phone call from Shepherdstown, and they said that they were going to send, writing to this effect, they're not ready to nominate anyone. They, they need to have a meeting first. So until, I mean, the deadline ideally would be December 6, but if they can't meet that deadline, then it would just be open positions on the JCDAs.
To that deadline too, I mean, I don't, just from my standpoint, I don't necessarily want to rush to appoint this board. I want to thoroughly vet and just interview candidates, rather than just throwing random people on there that applied, and we just need to fill a board. So if it doesn't occur December 6, or it partially occurs, or, there's no reason we couldn't put this off until a later date if necessary.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have a quorum right now, but, I mean, you just don't have a quorum, so they just can't do any business.
And even as far as applying, I mean, it's the holiday season, people are focused on a lot, a lot of other things. Maybe after the new year, there'd be a lot more interest, because everything is closed out, Christmas, Hanukkah, et cetera. So, I mean, from my standpoint, if we had to push it to January, I mean, it is what it is.
And what I told the, the city of Shepherdstown when they called me was, you know, get us the names when you can get them, and we'll appoint, you know, it's up to you when you give us the names. So, you know, they asked if it would be a problem, and I told them it wouldn't, because we need them, we, we need the three names from them. So, that's what I told them. So, I mean, you can do it at, at your leisure, it's just that they do not, right now, have a, a quorum to.
And I don't see, I don't want to rush through this either. I want to be able to get through the holidays, and I don't think January is anything, I think putting it off until after January, I would agree with your comments about that.
To Nick's, is that an issue? You have one meeting, supposedly you're supposed to have one meeting in December.
Right. We have one meeting in December. Right this very second, there is nothing terribly pressing that we would need to vote on. We are, we're doing business as usual, and we do have some things in motion, but those things have already been approved. And so I, I do not foresee a situation where we would need a quorum between now and January. There could be something that occurs, but we can deal with that as it comes.
I guess the issue is to vote on the water line. When is that supposed to take place?
Well, that's in flux right now. It's going to really be up to the new board. We've got a, we have eight, eight members now, and once there's a quorum, and we can have another meeting, then that, that group would decide then when that's going to be, or if it's still going to even be an issue.
I think Charlestown will put off the vote on the sewer body in January, so nothing can happen before the rally.
Right, and so, yeah, I don't see, I don't see an issue with putting off that decision until January as a problem at all.
Well, I put item number 12 on the agenda before all the resignations, when we had a 21-member Development Authority Board, and I know if the board remains at large, that decision has not been made, but I think, you know, it behooves all of us to find a better location for you all to, to meet, so that the members of the board, you know, are in front, and people can hear, there can be, the public can attend. And also, I think we were all surprised to realize there's no recording of the meetings, and. I know you, Mr. Deal, you said your lawyer advised you not to, but as an elected official, I advise you to please have the board consider that. I think that's, we need to do some trust building here and have complete transparency, and that is one manner that is fairly easy, depending on where you're located for your meeting. I understand you may not be able to do a webcast, but a video recording and.
And we certainly do always encourage the public to attend the meetings, in, in all honesty, until, I guess it was until the, maybe the August meeting, the, and we went back, and we couldn't go back all 30 years that we've been, that we've been around, but we went back as far as we could, and the most visitors we've ever had have been like eight.
And I real, I realize that, that this is a new situation, but I think we need to adjust and make some changes, and I know during my first term, you know, we got CD discs if we couldn't make a meeting, to listen to the meeting, that may be what you have to do, and, but anyway, there's a lot of options up there, but that will be up to the new board to consider, but I certainly hope it's something attention is paid to.
Yes, just a little add-on to Commissioner Taff. I mean, at the JCC, I've been a strong proponent of having meetings when times the majority of residents can attend those meetings. I mean, this is a bedroom community, everybody commutes far for work, and it's a matter between paying your mortgage and coming to a county commission meeting, I mean, it's pretty clear. Granted, the new board can make new times when they meet, that's up to the majority of the board.
And we've had no problem getting attendees for the past several months.
Yeah, I mean, well, that's, but still, I'm sure there are other people, you may have twice the attendance if you had a meeting.
I don't know if we could even do business there.
I think it's common sense, just understanding where we live in the area and what our citizens are facing, going to work every day, to have meetings at times that accommodate our residents, because frankly, we all work for our residents, so. Again, that's up to the board.
Yeah, and I'll certainly pass both of those along to our new board.
Thank you.
I want to follow up on what you were just talking about with the appointments. Is it your intention not to appoint on December 6? Because we need to let people know who have already applied, if that is, if that is the, the will of the commission.
Okay, so listening to Mr. Deal, it doesn't sound like it matters, per se. I mean, probably it would be good to have a board, if possible, but it doesn't sound like it's going to be a massive detriment either.
I don't think so. There's, again, there could be something that comes up that, that is critical, and we can address that with you at that time and see what your.
Okay, so I mean, I'll move, we hold off JCDAs' appointments until January. Any discussion?
My, my one question on that is, I think, I'm okay with delaying until January, but I think the other question before us, and maybe it's not really outlined here in the agenda, is the size of the board. You know, personally, I think the board is too big, 21. You just end up with a few people really knowing the nuts and bolts of everything. I think, I think it's a hard group to manage.
It is. I can, you know, again, it's, it is completely within your purview to appoint up to 21 members, but I know most county commissions in the state have been reducing the size of their boards.
And we've had, historically, for all of our boards, we have lack of interest. They're all volunteer positions, so, you know, going forward, three or four years from now, will you be able to find 21 who are interested in serving on that board? That's another condition. My recommendation would be to reduce it as well.
I mean, do you think we could, Nathan, Stephanie, as far as, could you make that determination on agenda item 15, or not really? Would that have to be gone next? We were discussing the resignations, but.
Yeah, I mean, we can put it on next week's agenda, as well. I mean, if you're not, if you're not appointing until January, then there's, I mean, we could discuss it and make sure that we've covered all of our bases.
A win in January, that would be.
The first, it would, the new president would put it on the agenda, and what's the first meeting in January? It's, I think it's the third.
Hold on, the third.
So it would probably be the 17th, if I had to guess. Because I think I'll make the agenda for the third, and then they'll take over, and then you could still appoint on the third.
Yeah.
On the.
Right. We have a third, a 17th, and a 33rd.
Isn't the 17th too late, Nick?
Our board meeting is scheduled for the 15th.
Okay, so it would have to be the third.
Yeah.
Unless we move a special meeting.
Yeah, and we could certainly move our board meeting, too.
Why don't you do, I mean, yeah. Well, we'll see what we, what happens, yeah. What happens on the third, but we need to know for the agenda.
Want to tentatively set it for the third?
I mean, my only, I don't know how many people travel, and if they're still going to be out of town, maybe, I don't know. I have no idea.
17th. Let's do it.
17th, that would be an evening meeting.
That's better then, too, because if we have a lot of interviews, we can interview everybody, don't miss work and stuff, so. Well, it would obviously have to be changed then, so you have a lot more time to apply, and more people could apply, so. So that, that'll now spin our update.
So we'll have to re-advertise then in the paper for a new deadline.
Sorry, I also have a question. I mean, I'm advertising for, what, nine or 10 positions? So if you decide to scale down the board, I don't really know how to advertise it, so.
Let's, let's talk about that right now, too. Okay, so the municipalities are all going to get spots regardless?
Yes.
So that's six.
Five.
Five.
And then accounting mission.
Six, okay, so we, essentially, what do you think? Commissioner Taff, what, I mean, no vote, obviously, but what do you think, number-wise, would you propose?
Well, I know this is going to seem drastic to some people, but I think 11 is.
We have to have 12.
You have to have 12.
Have to have 12, that's right. I was thinking of the ESA board, it was 11, and we made it smaller, and 12.
Lucky 13.
I was thinking 13 to 15.
I think, I think to make it an uneven number.
Yeah.
I think that 13 would be a better.
13.
I agree with 13, too.
It's not 21, thank goodness, but it's, it's still a large group. It's still a good, I mean, it's still a good.
I know it's a large group, but I, I think there's more interest these days, and I think there may be objections. It looks like we're just downsizing in general.
I think we're doing that for efficiency purposes, not necessarily trying to.
I don't care about efficiency.
Have you, you want a 21-member board?
No, but I think 15 or 17 would be more.
I think it's, I think it's an efficient, I think that 13 is a good place to start.
I can agree with Commissioner Lauren's idea of 15.
And I think if, you, you want to go to 15?
I can agree with Commissioner Lauren's idea with 15. It shrinks it by six, but still doesn't make it too small. So even, because it's a matter, you need a quorum of 12, too. You need some leeway with individuals.
Well, we don't, we have to have 12 members. We can, we have a quorum at, at half plus one, so it doesn't really matter after that. The only thing that I was going to say is that you don't necessarily have to appoint everybody up to 15 in that first meeting. You could actually hold two or three of those spots open, if you'd like, just to.
So you, are you, who's okay with 15?
I think it's a lot. I mean, I think it's more to manage, and it's more, you know, as long as they're dedicated people and they're willing to attend meetings.
At this point, I don't think they're going to have any problems with that.
Well, it depends on who gets appointed. You know, they, some people may have a one-issue interest, and once that one issue is resolved, they may not ever come to another board meeting. That happens on other boards.
And depending on how, depending on how things go, that, that, that one issue might have already gone away before we ever have a meeting, and so we, we won't be discussing it at all. I mean, we'll probably be getting, you know, getting updates on what they're doing, but there won't be any votes or any discussion specifically. If, and again, everything depends, but I don't foresee that as something that's going to be something we spend a lot of time on.
You have the ability to have members call into meetings if they can't attend in person. You have a conference call system and whatnot?
We do, we do have a conference call system. There's, there's a couple of idiosyncrasies to that. I can't, I do not know exactly what they are, but we can accommodate. But I think you have to have a quorum without people calling in, is what, the way I think that goes.
Present, and I, that might be.
I looked that up when we were doing.
Yeah, we talked about that.
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
This is stuff that we need to let the public know, because if perhaps they know this date, there's a meeting probably, I won't be here, but I can call in. They need to know these types of things, so.
Right, right.
So Nick, how many?
I would be happy to review that issue a little further, but I, I'm not, it seems as though if you have a quorum of members attending, I don't think you have to actually physically attend every.
There's an ethics opinion on it.
Okay, so we can't make a decision because it's on agenda, but is there a consensus of number, so we can give Jessica some direction there?
Well, I wanted to ask Nick, what's the, what's the norm for other counties on their, the number, the number of people in their development authority?
It, it does vary. I think that if I'm, I think that Berkeley County just went to 13. I, and they had a large board before that. I know that some of the other counties have gone down to 12, some of the other counties are at 13 to 15. I don't know, I'm sure that they're out there, but I don't know of any other counties that are at 21 anymore.
What's the advantage of having 15 people on the board, if we can do it with 13?
More, a wider way of knowledge.
Well, but what I've been told is, by some board members, is that with that bigger board, they don't get their questions answered, and, you know, it's very hard to have a fruitful discussion with 21 people.
It is difficult.
Yeah, and, and, yeah.
That's my problem. I want this to be a productive, working board, not just the executive committee or a select group of individuals making the decisions.
That's what you end up with, because as a staff member- That's what you end up with, because as a staff member, you know, I answer to five of you, but sometimes that's not easy. So, I can't imagine being a director trying to contact 21 people to figure out, you know, what the, how we're going to proceed. So, I mean, even for staff, you know, and that's why you end up with the executive within, you know, more people in the know.
Right.
Because you have to be able to do business day-to-day.
And then, and when there's a, when it is a smaller board, people are more accountable. I mean, we've had, we had board members that, and we do have a policy on this, but I don't think it's ever been enforced. We have board members that might miss six, seven months in a row of meetings and they, you know, and then they, you know, then there are other board members that show up for one meeting and then they miss two, then they show up for one and they miss two. And it's, I think that when you have a smaller board, everybody's more accountable.
Okay, to that point, because I don't, I want to put you on the spot. Can you provide us with a description of the current sitting board members of the JCDAs and how much, how many meetings they've missed?
I have a spreadsheet.
In a given period, like 12 to 24 months?
Yep.
Just out of curiosity.
I can send you that.
If we, those current sitting board members have missed 70% of meetings, I mean, they're effectively not a board member anyways.
Right.
So, I'd just like to see, no, I'd just like to see that if you could provide it to us, if it's easy.
Well, it should be in the minutes technically.
It is in the minutes, yeah.
Board members, number of meetings missed.
Yeah, I've, I've got a spreadsheet, so.
So, we can't answer questions from the audience?
Unfortunately, we can't answer questions from the audience, but that will be communicated.
So, what, what are we directing Jessica to do as far as an advertisement? That we need representatives of business, industry, and labor and are open right now?
I would like to put this on the agenda for the 6th and then re-advertise after that meeting, so that it is on the agenda to make a decision.
Okay, all right.
So, she can contact the applicants that we've had and tell them that the commission has decided to delay appointments from the 6th until January and then we will still have enough if she advertises that Monday to advertise in the spirit again with a new deadline.
Can we also put our social media and is there anybody, if anybody's even signed up for this text message stuff, you can reach all 15 people with that?
And most of those people are county employees, so.
Yeah, I get it, the text message. So, can we start with 13 and then increase it to 15 if we choose to, I mean, if we, I mean, I don't. See, I think 15 is a lot of people. It's a lot of people to round up and.
Actually, I have to say that currently there's interest, it's a major issue in the whole county. I would just assume have 21 if we.
Well, I'm not interested in 21, that's too many.
But I'll settle for 15.
That was too many, too many in the beginning.
I like 15, too.
Well, we can't really make a decision on that. It's just, it's.
No, it's just.
Yeah, okay.
It's up in the air, but it looks like it's between 13 and 17.
Okay.
Let's just call it a day on that.
Makes it 15.
I didn't think she was going to catch on to that.
Duh. I went to Charlestown Schools, are you kidding me?
All right, so is there anything else we want to add? Resident 15, I guess number 13 is done. Okay, here's a question. We need to move to you, though, right? Because he's on the clock, five minutes already. So, you must, is there anything we need even further for Nick?
I do, just had the question.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm assigned, are you going to have a meeting this month?
No.
No meeting this month.
No. No, I mean, if we don't have, if we don't have a quorum, or we don't have at least 12 members appointed, then we won't have a meeting.
Yeah.
And I have to preface that by saying my, that has to, that decision's made by my board chair, but I'm almost positive that's what his position is going to be.
Who is the board chair now?
Neil McLaughlin. Because there's no, we can't do business really, so.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lord.
Have a good day. Welcome aboard.
Okay, so Nathan, what cases are pertinent to outside counsel? Specifically, this outside counsel that's on the clock.
It depends on if you want to discuss anything about the PSD. I have our counsel for that available on the phone. If you want to discuss anything about the PSD dissolution and the entire issue. Then the issue related to the EEOC charges and then the issue related to the 18C.
Okay, so actually, hold on one second. I promised Mr. Lutz we would get to him, unfortunately. Is there, how long do you think you're, you're going to take, Mr. Lutz? I'm going to give you your full time, so.
How long does it take, the whole 15 minutes?
Okay, I'm going to let Mr. Lutz come up, because I promised him, so please come up, Mr. Lutz.
For the record, Danny Lutz, Cabletown District, and I shouldn't have sat down first. I have some handouts, and I didn't have enough to roll around. What I want to bring to the commission's attention, actually dovetails with the last discussion, and this is not to criticize the county commission, because no one should be castigated for what they didn't know. But I call your attention to the first item, says 136 entities. I've known about this since January. However, the way I got the information was through classified information, that is militarily classified information. So, I couldn't tell anybody anything about it until finally in October, the announcement was released. The USDA is looking and has been looking all summer, all spring and summer, to relocate the National Institute of Food and Agriculture and the Economic Research Service from the offices on D Street and East Street in Washington to areas outside the Beltway. This is approximately 750 GS-level jobs. Now, you all didn't know about it and I couldn't tell you about it for the aforementioned reasons, but the situation was our congressional representation could have told you about this. However, they didn't. I spoke with Chris Strovel in Senator Capito's office and without being terribly unkind, he looked at me like a deer in the headlights. He had no idea what was going on and I haven't heard from him since. I approached Senator Mooney's, Representative Mooney's office and they dismissed me abruptly without comment. I have since learned by gossip, and I'm trying to confirm this, that Representative Mooney's Chief of Staff, Maryland State Senator Michael Huff, made sure that at least two Maryland jurisdictions knew about this bidding process. No one in the 17 counties of the 2nd District of West Virginia knew about this. I've checked with all of them. So, while we were getting rock wool, we were shut out of the bidding process for 750 well-paying, non-polluting jobs for which we were perfectly suited to bid. For instance, had we partnered with WVU to locate the Food and Agriculture Institute at the Experimental Farm in Carneville, we would have been very close to the proposed Mark Stop that Ranson has in its master plan, so that the people working Washington could have come out here instead of, during the interim before they relocated. And then partnering with Shepherd University, the Economic Research Service could have been located on or near the Shepherd University campus. What a blessing this would have been for Jefferson County to have gotten one or both of them. And we would have, and as you can see in the, in the article there, 35 states put in bids. Not one was from north of the Mason-Dixon line. That was the, that's what I wanted to bring up to you, and I'm not criticizing the commission. You couldn't do what you didn't know. Now, and I am going to be harshly critical of our congressional representation. I seldom see a representative from either our US representative or either of our senators at any of these meetings. I don't say they should be at every one, they can't. Not with 55 counties for two and with 17 for another. It can't be done. But they could at least be in touch and they should be advising both you and the Development Authority about situations such as this. And yes, the more classified information, there's more relocations of this kind coming. Once again, I can't talk about it, because I get my information through classified sources. And like with the Commerce Department, when I took an oath of security in the military, it was for life. And the second item is strictly an FYI. The, this is an issue of several lawsuits that are flying, one from Arkansas and one from the eastern shore of Maryland, where the Farm Service Agency made loans and grants to various businesses without obtaining all of the needed EPA, US EPA permits. Now, once again, I'm not going to tangle with Mr. Cochran or Mr. Lorenzetti, because I'm out of my element there and I'm not going to attempt to practice law. But when you do things like a payment and move taxes agreement, you start dealing with fungible monies, where you can't tell from where they're coming. And so, someone can allege that this is federal money involved and with this rock wool, you may have a problem coming up that you haven't anticipated. So, I gave you that, so that your attorneys, your two attorneys now, can look into this and just see where you stand. And that's what I wanted to share with you today, not to condemn you, to advise you.
Question, 136 have applied for it?
Yes, sir.
Like, when was this known? I guess, was this in the general information in the public arena or how did they all?
As the, I don't know exactly when the bidding process was released. I heard about it in January of this year through, inside the Beltway sources. When, I would have, I would have, I would have expected that there would have been a general announcement through the congressional liaisons. Apparently, there wasn't, or you all would have gotten it. So, I wish I had a good answer for you on that. I learned about the closure of the bidding process in October.
Winchester applied. I mean, that's, I mean, it's bizarre, you don't hear something of this large scale, just even in the public arena, irrelevant of congressional delegations or.
It was a.
It's like the FBI relocation thing. You would think you would hear in the news, like the FBI headquarters was all over the news.
Yes. And I'm with you on that point, Mr. Compton. Barbara Comstock was doing her job and she got defeated. So, I wanted to share that with you. I also, I made it a point to ask the Development Authority if they were even afforded the opportunity to bid for these facilities, and they said not. So, if they didn't know about it, you certainly didn't know.
Yeah, I mean, there's only four that, someone on the Development Authority should keep track of stuff like this daily, I mean, so we can jump on it. I mean, granted, 136 people applying for one thing, I mean, yeah, the odds are not great, but they're better than zero, so.
The USDA is already, I mean, we already have some of the facilities here. We have the USDA, we have the fish hatchery, and we have.
Well, but the point is, the reason those facilities are here is because we had the right things to offer. And with, with the master plan that Ranson had developed out there, one or both could have been within, that is, put the Economic Research at Shepherd, run shuttle buses from the Mark Stop, the Experimental Farm campus for the, for the institute, we'd have been a very competitive bidder.
Well, we have those two USDA, Department of Ag facilities because of Senator Byrd.
But now we've got.
He got the job done, yes.
And Commissioner, we've now got to start doing this on our own, because we ain't got Senator Byrd no more.
Well, and it's a different, yeah, dynamics.
We're a trillion in debt, too.
Anyway, that's what I wanted to share with you this morning, once again, to share and not criticize. Thank you.
If you notice something that's not classified, please immediately bring it to the commission's agenda.
As soon as I know something that I, I can share, because there's some big stuff coming down the pike I can't talk about.
Like, when was this declassified? Did you sit on this more than 24 hours?
This was decl, it had to have been declassified before Labor Day.
Okay, all righty.
Because after all, it was in the, you see, it was newspaper articles.
Oh, yeah. Okay, right on. Thank you, Mr. Lorenz.
Remember, we do have a bad historic precedent. In the Peninsula Campaign, the commanders on the Confederate and Union sides read the newspapers to find out what each other were doing. So, we have a bad precedent there.
Right on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move to Nathan and.
In answer to your question, Commissioner Compton, I would say discussion of PSD dissolution, the first item on the agenda undermining, and then there are two EEOC issues and then 18C 171.
Okay, so when I meant counsel, I meant counsel that is here on the clock, counsel.
Counsel that is here is dealing with the two EEOC issues and 18C 171, so this is your counsel.
Okay, so let's, let's do those first prior to lunch and a few other business items that are quick. Go to lunch, come back for the rest of your agenda and then the rest of assessors' duties, county administrator reports, and anything else we need to touch on. So, Mr., so let's move to, what was it? EEOC?
The two EEOC issues and 18C 171.
Okay, so.
And those would be all matters that I think could potentially involve litigation or liability for the county.
Is there anything outside of executive session? Is there any outside, so EEOC is just a general EEOC complaint?
Correct.
The, the other one is?
The 18C 171 is a lawsuit by Vision against the County Commission and Russell and a couple of elected officials.
Has nothing to do with that one today, was it? That was, that was served today?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Kennedy, your counsel for that issue.
Okay, so I move we go into executive session, discuss EEO charge 533-2018-01557 and Jefferson High Circuit Court Civil Action 18C 171.
And there's another EEOC charge on there, too. Is that one included in this?
Yes.
Okay, so 533-20100706 then, too.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, go into executive session.
And everybody, please be sure and take all your personal items with you when you leave the room.
They will be destroyed if they're not.